Say name, motion carries. Item number six, special presentation, uh, elementary school presentation. Fitzgerald, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me present a little bit about Mozzanee Elementary School. I'm Tom Fitzgerald, I'm the principal at the elementary school. And I just want to talk a little bit about what's going on at the elementary. We're in what, like our fourth week now? So things are, things are rolling. Just recently, last Thursday, we had what's called our Freedom Walk. And it was awesome to witness that. It's a way to not only remember nine eleven, but just thank and appreciate all of the firefighters, EMT, police, National Guard. They all brought vehicles. They all brought, I mean, I, I think there was eighty or ninety percent of the police force there, multiple firefighters. I think I saw at least six National Guard members, so the, the participation was awesome. Many of the families and friends of the students came and took the walk. Basically, we walk, just call it the big block. You know, we don't try to cross any roads, but we do the big block of the school grounds. You know, go past the rec center and the softball field there and then make our way back. And then on the way back, you can see on the left there, they line up their vehicles and the, the kids will take pictures. They were letting them jump into the trucks and, you know, look at this, look inside the police cars and all that. And the kids just got a blast, so. Great community and collaboration, great learning experience for the kids. The group that I, I took a lap with, one of the groups, we stopped Veterans Park there to see that, so that was pretty cool. So that was just last Thursday. Some of the other things that, that we're doing is with character education and just learning about durable skills. The classrooms do this every single day. Our core values are safe, respect, responsible. There's other values that we talk about, for example, let's say kindness for the week. But not only are we just, you know, having a morning discussion with this and, and lessons, but the teachers are trying to incorporate this throughout the day and throughout the week. What's really cool, we had a conversation today is, for example, let's say kindness is our value. They're incorporating that into their stories like for reading. So it's coming up over and over again all day and all week, and then they just go to the next value and so on and so forth. One thing we've added this year is a portfolio for every single student. Theirs is more personalized, this is just kind of a, you know, color generic one, but theirs would be more personalized. So they're gonna do the cover for themselves, they're gonna come up with their different ways to divide it. So there's things in there, they talk about themselves. And this tracks them from kindergarten through third grade, and then we, we're even going to go into fourth grade. And then from there, probably just take it home with them after fourth grade, we'll see how that goes. But they're gonna set some goals in there, they talk about their learning throughout the year, what they learned about leadership, what they learned about values and things like that, and then it goes with them every single year. So that's something we've added this year with our character education. We're gonna be talking just shortly about school improvement. And one of the main focuses, one of our main goals is to just increase student engagement. And so during in-service this August, you can see our teachers experimented. We have a classroom set of VR goggles, virtual reality goggles. And I don't know about you, I've never put them on before. So that was my first time, I'm pretty sure about ninety-five percent of our staff members have never put them on before. I thought about bringing a pair.
You're not a gamer.
No, I thought about bringing a pair, but I didn't want anybody to get dizzy because it, it, it's interesting. I, I mean, I don't know if you guys ever experienced that, but. Some ways that we can use this, because we've never implemented this yet, but you can take virtual field trips. So, I mean, we could go to some kind of a museum in Washington and, and go through the museum. They talked about, so let's say our focus for the week is on oceans, alright, that's our theme. We could set the story, or maybe we read about the story in the ocean, we could set up a, a virtual reality in an ocean. You can create your own field trip, so like, we can go out to the school forest, for example, and take, the three sixty cam's the best, but you can even take like a GoPro and cameras like that. But like if you had a three sixty camera, you could go, you know, take a walk through the school forest, different pathways and such, and then load that in there. And so they could maybe, prior to going to the school forest, they could take a trip through the school forest VR, and then they're there in reality or vice versa. So there's a lot of options here that we have. Again, this is just a tool to increase engagement and maybe supplement some other things that we're doing on a daily or weekly basis.
Did we buy them or was there a grant or?
That, that.
Common school fund.
Part of common school fund money.
Cause you check them off from the library.
Yeah, like a little year.
Awesome, how many did we get?
A classroom set, one classroom set, so.
Yeah.
When we were at the airshow in Chippewa, they had the virtual where you could be fighting. It was in one of the, I can't remember, one of the armed forces.
Oh, Navy, Navy?
Well, there was the Navy and the Air Force, I can't, I don't remember which one it was right now. But it was, it was hard, I mean, to, because everything was moving and going.
So you put them on.
Yeah, yeah. And you're trying to keep up with it, and it was, you know, just unreal.
You're also given like a joystick, so like when you put them on, you're like moving through, it's like you're moving through whatever, the, the ocean.
Right, yeah.
In the airplane, on a path, whatever it might be, yes, it's interesting, so. The next one too is, in the instructional committee meeting, we talked about a, a variety of AI tools. And the one main one that the elementary is using, we piloted it last year, or they piloted it last year, and now we're implementing it, you're hearing a lot about what's called e-Spark. And so what I thought would be cool is for you to see what this looks like. So I'm gonna go in, what I, what I want to preface this about though is this isn't, this is merely a tool. This isn't replacing books, this isn't replacing all of the other reading strategies that our teachers are doing. But what it's doing is it's enhancing them, it's giving them more time, they're, they're, they have the flexibility as to how they want to use it. It might be small groups, it might be whole group, it might be a single student. But it's a way, as maybe as a teacher is working with a small group on different reading strategies, the other students are, can be going through their own reading and/or math with e-Spark. The neat thing about this engagement is they get to control, and I'll show you here shortly, they get control, control like the story. Okay, so they get to choose, and I'll, I'll show you what it looks like here. So I'm gonna get out of here and actually go into it. I am by, I am not an expert here, so. We're gonna do a realistic fiction. So you can pick whatever really strategy you're, you're looking to conquer, whether it's vowels, or maybe it's a short sounds, or in this case, we're just gonna do a realistic fiction here. But it allows them to pick a character, so again, it's already engaging, they get to choose like the character. And I'm gonna just choose this guy right here. Um, and.
Have you actually watched kids do this?
Yeah, did you?
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty cool. Kids are all giddy about it, they're showing me their animal, you know, they're, they're engaged.
Yeah. So I guess Paul will tell me how you're feeling right now.
Very excited, Tom.
Okay, so. We'll stick with excited. I am, I am not going to go through the video here, you can see it's a two, it's a two minute thirty-nine second video. So this particular lesson is nine minutes and thirty-nine minutes, not counting transitions. So we're talking about ten minutes a day, that's it. Do they do it every single day? Probably not, maybe some weeks, yeah, maybe some weeks it's three days a week. So it's very flexible that way in terms of how much they want to use it, but it's, it's really not a lot. But it's very powerful. I'm just gonna go into the like, the game part of it, I think that's the fun part personally. So I don't have the sound on here, but it, it goes through, it says, hi, ready to turn the ordinary into something extraordinary? Let's make a story that feels just like real life. We're doing third grade, by the way, here, so you got different levels. And as they go through this, you might have a third grader at the third grade level, and they, they can take like a pre-test on here that kind of puts them where they should be. Maybe they're at a second grade level, maybe they're at a fourth grade level. So that's the neat thing is, we can get them caught up, we can push them ahead. So, you know, the whole class doesn't have to be at the same level here.
And there's an audio part, too.
Yes.
It's not only just reading visual, there's an audio part.
Correct.
That goes with it, it's pretty cool. I enjoyed it.
So, and it says, describe the main character type of your story, so they can, they can pick here. You know, do you want the main character to be a loyal friend, dreamer, curious explorer, whatever? Let's just go loyal friend. Perfect, now choose a name for your story's main character. So we can pick a name that they kind of offer here, or, let's just say, Paul, you're gonna be in this story.
It's awesome.
And now we get to pick the setting of the story. So again, this is, this is them individualizing this, personalizing this, they get to pick where we're gonna go. So you can see we have some choices here, communities, garden, so garden, a bus, space, modern art, they might pick that. Or we could pick wherever we want to go. And I'm thinking Paul would want to be maybe in the woods. So I'm just gonna say the woods there. And now if he creates the story. Mystery of the wrestling room, Paul loved exploring the woods behind his house. He called it his secret forest. Every day after school, he would grab his backpack, fill the snacks, a pot plate, and so on and so forth. And there's, there he is.
Is there a tree standing? Cause that is so me.
So you can see.
I got the snacks, Tom.
I mean, it's a third grader, it's not super long, but, I mean, it, it'll take them a little bit, done reading. Then it goes into the, you know, interactive part, well, what do you think of the story? Alright, Paul, was it a great story?
Excellent, love the snacks.
And then they start asking them questions, glad you liked the story, you can type more feedback, or just click the blue arrow so they could say more in there if they wanted to. This is also helping their writing skills. And then it starts asking them about the story, Paul, what hap, or which of these events happened first? I'm just gonna pick that, we'll see what happens. Fantastic, so it gives them that instantaneous feedback. Alright, and so on and so forth, I don't think we need to go through this whole thing. From the teacher's perspective then, they get a report from this. So they can see exactly what the student answered, how they answered it, you know, what the, who the character was in their story. And they get a report from this on any assignment that they have. So in this particular one, and there's lots of different reports, I just picked one typical standard report, but there's different, there's different reports that they can print out and see, they can see what level they're at, they can see what standards they were trying to get at. This particular one has three main like symbols, so mastery, it's hard to read. Mastery, approaching mastery, which is the diamond, and then a red triangle, did not meet. And then what they might see, I just did a screenshot to keep names out of this. But you can see the different standards that, these are hitting long and short vowels, controlled vowels, the A sound, tricky spelling pattern, decoding words, and again, they're not, they're just in the process of doing this, so they've only done a couple here. So you can see the top student there is approaching, those first two, the teacher can see that, maybe they have them repeat, they do another one with long and short vowels. You can see the next student there has mastered that, so they're ready to move on. So it gives the teacher feedback as to what can I work on, what do I need to work on with the class? What do I need to work on, maybe I have a small group for long and short vowels? Maybe there's some individualized stuff with the students. So it gives them some really good feedback, not the student's feedback, but the teacher as well. So just a tool for engagement that we are currently using. And that's all I have for you. Are there any questions?
Are we able to, as parents, able to see what they're doing in there?
Um, no, not in terms of the, the progress. I mean, I think the teacher could report that like at a conference, they could show you where they might be and what they've worked on and stuff, but.
You don't have access to it, but you can request.
Correct.
An update on it.
Do the kids have access at home to it? Cause I know different book flicks and stuff, they can log in from home.
Yes.
I found that out Saturday morning about six.
Thank you. I would encourage, again, I do this all the time, and I, I know it's hard for some of you with your jobs, but get into school. I went in last week, I emailed the principal just to, just to cruise around and see what's going on. Not, you know, not to micromanage, but to see all the great things that are going on. Cause there really are some incredible things going on, and, and I, there's special events. I know the superintendent has encouraged everybody to get in, just notify people when you're doing it. Alright, thanks a lot. Alright, item B, discussion, school improvement plan and district improvement plan.
Right.
Tom?
Alright, Christie's bringing it up. I, I would add, I guess, to, to your question about parents' reports, not the first one to ask, but what I would add is, our relationship with e-Spark has been really great. They're a really responsive company, and so that probably will actually be a request we ask, is like, could you add like a parent account attachment? Other programs have it, I haven't seen it there, but we'll see what they say, but not the first person to ask. The, the demand is kind of like, I just, I would like to see the report on that.
And to Tom's point, some of these, these emerging technology programs that we're using are relatively new, and, and with the relationships we have with lift-offs, we're in the ground floor of some of this. So we do have some ability to control where the program is going in the future and what add-ons they are. And they really want our feedback on this stuff because they're trying to, you know, figure out how best to, to, to create their, their specific app and device.
It was really pretty cool for me on Tuesday, cause I went into one of my former student's classroom to see her teaching, and then she was using that, it was really, and the kids were all giddy, you know, cause she said, well, he used to teach me, and then they were doing this activity, it was pretty cool. So I'll let you continue, Tom.
Alright, I'm gonna give just a, an overview, but a, a lot of what I talked, talked on last month i- is really the, the crux of the district side of this. So I'm gonna get through it, just an overview, and then let each building principal talk about their school-specific plans. But if you go to the next slide, one thing, as, as we got together as a, a district team, as an admin team this summer, within our building leadership teams, and we started building this, while we look at all data as we're building these plans, we did want to just provide context to some of this, and that is, our test scores as a whole are going down. And, and, and we're not trying to run away from that, we're, we're not trying to hide behind that. However, for the sake of today, what I want to keep in mind is, this is an aggregate of three through eleven and doesn't tell the whole story of everything. And when we get to the state report cards and our local report cards, we will dive much deeper into, to this data, which should be next month if the state stays on their normal pathway. But we did want to just provide this context of, as we look at why we're talking about this engagement, it, it's because we know that we can't be content with where we're at, and that there is a context of, we need to, to get better at certain areas, and we need to take a look. And so when we talk about this engagement, it, it is through that lens that we hope to increase student achievement, right? If, if we are re-engaging students in their learning, we would hope to see these numbers improve. But keeping that in mind, that this is an aggregate of, of fourteen hundred students, and that percentage is, percentage of students who were proficient or better. So we, in, in math, from that big aggregate, we did have a seven and a half percent decrease of students out of those fourteen hundred who tested that proficient or, or above. And in ELA, that is a, a four-point decrease. Again, pockets were not everybody decreased. You know, for example, at the high school, in math, we actually saw an increase, but we, we did a lot of work there, and so that would make sense. So it, it is, we'll get into that next month when we dig into those report cards, we just wanted to provide a context.
I have a question.
Yeah.
If you're saying fourteen hundred, but this is only for A's three through eleven, where's the fourteen hundred?
I, I'm just quick estimating, we only test, we don't test eighteen fifty, we don't test our seniors, we don't test our K one, two. I just did mental math, probably a little less than fourteen hundred. Figure about a hundred and fifteen a class. Hundred and twenty a class-ish.
Will we see next month then, like, where the gaps were? Like, I just think like COVID, there was a lot of lower test scores and kids were really trying to catch up after that.
Yep.
That group of kids is now moving into that fourth, fifth, sixth grade.
Yep.
Is that affecting like how that has shifted into this score potentially? Like, do we see where that bachelor scores is?
You, you'll be able to track that for sure.
Okay, we'll be able to see it.
Whether or not we're, we're beyond a point where we want to use that as part of it, yes or no? But yes, you'll be able to track cohorts at that point when we dig in deeper.
I'll be interested to see what the no cell phones, what kind of impact that has.
So as we built this plan, again, we talked last week of really trying to build systems that make some of these changes, we're trying to make sustainable. Diane had brought up the point, like, th- this isn't a new topic of, of students disengaging, but we're, we're talking about how do we build systems to sustain change as opposed to going back to the old ways routinely, right? And so where, when, when we built these plans, we tasked each building with really trying to gear our conversations along these pillars. And if those conversations were outside, and they don't impact student learning, now is not the time we want to talk about them. And really trying to focus that conversation and align the work that we're doing within those pillars. And then you're gonna hear a lot of principals talking about our work around engagement. So I included this in here again to provide context of, when, when we're talking about engagement, we're not talking about, you know, producing a lesson in which we put on costumes and dance and entertain kids. We're talking about creating a learning environment where students are driving their own learning, where they're becoming intrinsically motivated to improve themselves along the learning outcomes of that class. And so creating that intrinsic motivation in our learners that they want and know how to become lifelong learners versus just maybe participating or compliance for a grade. Or as you work down the engagement continuum, withdrawing, not engaging, doing the bare minimum, getting my D to, to graduate, how do we re-engage that student to want to learn by, by personalizing their education, giving them choice and relevance? So this is the context in which when, when the principals start talking about student engagement, that, that's the element in which we're talking, is how we get students to start driving their own learning. And so we, we set this ambitious goal as a, as a district. We're, we're working on creating and evaluating student engagement measurements. That's both from hearing from students, are you engaged in your learning? Are, when, in from your point of view, are these environments, your, does your learning environments contain the elements we're trying to create, what's your perception? And so we're working on building these measurements, teacher self-assessments of engagement ratings, are, are you building these elements into your classroom, are you seeing it? Administrator walkthrough data. And, and we're hoping that if we can really put in a lot of work to that, that we're gonna see an increase in that student's achievement scores that we talked about. So I'm gonna let the buildings talk about their specific items.
So I'm just gonna stick with the student-centered pillar of our improvement plan. There is an instructional component, there is a community component, there is a growth, professional growth component. Many of the instructional components will mirror what we're doing with the student-centered components here and, and our action steps. So like I just showed you the e-Spark as a learning tool, our teachers are still learning about that, it's still fresh for them. Remember, we just, we had two teachers pilot it last year, and now we're implementing it. So they're still getting training on it and learning about it, learning about those reports. So it's, it's still fairly new to them, but that's one of our action steps for the student-centered pillar. Another one is we, they've been using Seesaw more so as a communication tool. And so this is, this is what's called a learning management system, LMS. In the high school, they use Canvas for this, so at the elementary at Seesaw. Well, now Seesaw is starting to make itself better, and they have some learning tools that are coming along with that. So like, in other words, tools that students can actually engage in Seesaw with, again, different reading things, math things. So that's one of the things we're trying to implement. Again, it's, it's a process here, we're still learning about that. And then, as you know about the Fab Lab grant that we got for the elementary, we're trying to incorporate that as a resource, not only in the classrooms, but as a special, where they're being able to create and make things in the Fab Lab. From a, again, an elementary standpoint, so it's quite different than the high school Fab Lab, but. And then the last one is, we're in basically year two of, of Act Twenty here, and they're continuing to learn different high-level reading strategies and incorporating that into their daily lessons. And those are the four student-centered action steps that we're trying to focus on this year.
Thanks for having us. Alright, so as the middle school, as we started to dive into the engagement goal and the overarching district focus on student engagement, our BLT did a fantastic job having deep conversations about what is engagement and what does that look like? Tom mentioned creating systems that are sustainable, but also a lot of our conversation with the BLT was, how do we make it attainable as well? How do we make it something that is realistic, that is something that our, our, one hundred percent of our staff, the middle school, can follow through on and show at the end of the year that we have done all of these things? So we kept engagement as our umbrella to our conversation, and then really focused in on the, the four pillars and developed three goals that, that fit within that framework. And the BLT proposed ideas, brought it back to teams for feedback, and then we came back together and finalized our goals. So some of our action steps within those goals, really, again, focus on engagement, so you're hearing that word a lot. However, right, what does that look like, and how can we, how can we increase that engagement in order to impact those academic scores and academic achievement? So the first one connects back to the student-centered learning, so we're asking that one hundred percent of staff are, it actually is two, sorry, so they're actually using two times throughout the year where they're gonna offer students the opportunity to demonstrate understanding through a, a project or an assessment of choice. Right, so speaking to that personalized learning, speaking to increasing engagement, if I have the opportunity to, to show you that I really understand something through, you know, through options, and I get to pick this, this option because that speaks to me, that is naturally going to increase a student's investment in that project and that final product. That second one is connected to the instructional excellence pillar. And really asking that our student, or that our teachers are, every semester, trying to do research engagement strategies. So a number of ways that we're, we're, that we're trying to increase the, the menu, if you will. Every staff meeting, I'm gonna start by modeling an engagement strategy, just to give an idea that they could quick bring, bring back to class. The second one is also a way that we're gonna kind of support, I'm sorry, the third bullet is a way we're gonna support the second bullet. We're asking that staff participate in what I'm calling community circles, it's a random grouping of staff members. Part of the feedback in connecting with staff was, we don't know everybody in the building, so it'd be neat to just kind of mix it up. I know my, my grade level, but I don't know people on the other, the other parts of the building. So mixing those groups up and having them engage in conversations about what are you doing in your classroom. And sometimes science teachers learn the most from a math teacher, or a math teacher learns something from, from an ELA teacher. So knowing that, giving them those natural opportunities to have some of those conversations and maybe take something away that, that was unexpected. The last two bullets connect to those collaboration and community and professional growth and leadership. So really, again, engagement is the umbrella, and then those four pillars of the portrait of an educator, just making sure we're, we're keeping that at the center of all of the things we. Just making sure we're, we're keeping that at the center of all of the things we do when we're bringing our conversations back to that. So put it in a good direction.
So high school, similar to what Kate has talked about. The SIP that we created at the high school level went through a process with our building leadership teams with our BLT. And that really helps us think about the voices of our staff and what we're thinking about building in terms of our professional learning throughout the course of the year and really thinking about how to use their voices in directing kind of that longer vision of where we're headed as a, as a district. So our BLT landed on several different goals. What I highlighted here are going to be from the instructional piece and from the student excellence side as well. One of the things that I think is important to understand is that at the high school level, it's a little bit different, I think. Because our building leadership team meets, we learn together, we discuss things together, and then they go to their departments and they kind of lead some of that learning. And then come back and we have this kind of feedback loop in a sense. And understanding that the goals we've set have gone through a pretty rigorous like feedback loop to land on what we, we have here. So as a staff, we really decided that everybody participating in phase one of lift-offs, which is a focus on personalized learning, is critical. So that all of us have a baseline understanding, we're talking the same language. We all know what it means when we say personalized learning. Now, that might look different in every single classroom, but when we know and we can talk about our goal as for our students to have a personalized learning experience, we all know what we're talking about. And that coming from lift-offs was, was really important for us to land on. Departments will collect, analyze, and act on data that's collected around student engagement. And they actually just finished this process last week and this week. We built that data collection together. So we looked at what are historically some powerful engagement survey questions. We looked at the staff, got their feedback. And now tomorrow, the staff meeting, I'll actually unveil, here's what we landed on, and then we'll begin to collect that data. At the department level, they will then look at what are we seeing as maybe a need for us to focus on for personalized learning? And that in turn feeds what we will do around professional development, coaching, and just the resources that we have available to us, getting them to the right people. Which gets us into that next piece about all teachers really looking to incorporate some new technologies. So that our students are engaged more in the classroom. And I think at the high school level, it's a little bit different than middle school and elementary because our students are very close to leaving us. So helping our teachers feel confident in understanding what our kids need once they leave us and how those are going to be different tech tools and also skills that as teachers, we need to build their confidence in so that our students are ready when they, they leave us. And then last, the piece around coaching is really important as we begin to think about supporting our staff around making some of these changes. And also capturing when we're seeing things done really, really well, how do we share that with the rest of our staff? And coaching allows for us to do that. One of the pieces that's not up on the slides right now is around community and collaboration. And I didn't want to steal Kurt's thunder in a way, but Kurt has been doing a fantastic job in pulling together students. So we can begin to think about revamping some of the values with a student voice and thinking how that kind of leads into a larger community piece. But I will have him talk about that when it's the high school's time to present to you all. So that's kind of what we have for our action steps this year.
So I, I think, I think the big piece was really, all, all three buildings really wanted to, to align to, to the district goal and really send the message that this is something that we want to do, K-12, and I think all plans reflect that. With an age developmentally appropriate focus. And that was something that they worked hard to do.
Thank you for all the effort. Just so you know, I told Greg this on Tuesday. I did ask staff members how, how the new principals are doing and, and the feedback was great. Just so you know, okay?
Yeah, I think, and I want to give a lot of credit to those guys. They've done a great job leading their staff through this process. And then, you know, we've kind of put Tom in charge of this aspect of it from a district level perspective. And they've all done a really great job on this. Today, we were able to have lift-offs in the building. The three individuals from lift-offs came and worked with, one with each building and the principal. And then we had a follow-up. We had a meeting first with the, the individuals from lift-offs and they worked. And then we had a follow-up with them before they left. They come to us once a month with multiple people. So they'll be back again October sixty-seventh to work with our staff on PD and getting into classrooms and offering suggestions and advice and how, you know, next steps. So it's, it's been a really beneficial one. I told Paul earlier tonight, it's technically not, it's embargoed. But lift-offs is, is, is going to be mentioned in a very prominent location by a speaker coming up in the next couple of weeks. And I'll be able to release to you where that's going to be held.
I would just like to piggyback off your comment about getting into schools as well. So if you guys have opportunities, staff meetings or whatever, where you think we could attend and learn more and not provide input, but just listen. I, I'm always looking for an excuse to get to schools. I did before the end of the year last year. Just took a tour with the principals. So if there's an opportunity that you guys see, there's a few hours, we could set some time aside. I'd be happy to come and listen to you.
I wish you were all retired. Go more into school. Anything else? I think most of you wish you were retired.
Yeah, sort of. It's nothing to do with going to school.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the work. Item C, discussion, construction update.
Sure, all right. Thank you. Well, thank goodness for the good weather we've had. We've actually made very good progress. So if you look at our site currently, the big focus is getting the footings and column pad poured, which is very important. So that is basically complete. A lot of the interior walls for bearing wall to be as, as getting to that point. There's a ton of mechanical roughing around that facility. Actually, look at the kitchen. Right now, we're doing a ton of underground electrical below all that. Plumbing's basically in these areas. We just set the grease interceptor out back and we're connecting back into the street. So that was completed today. We also were able to get our structural steel scheduled. It is coming next week. So that is gonna look really nice in about two weeks' time. You'll start seeing steel going up and cranes in place. So it's gonna come out of the ground, as it were. We had some coring underneath some existing footings that go into our existing building. And those are mechanical tie-ins. It'll happen once we get into those areas for demolition. But they'll have to be completed before we start pouring floors. And you'll see a lot of concrete being poured next couple of days, which we poured a bunch today, actually some of our flooring, which is great. Masons are laying our walls up for our firewall and our burnish block just came in. We're very happy to see that. We wasn't sure when we were gonna get it. So that's on site now because some of the burnish block is bearing point block for us. We have to have it to set some other pieces. So that's in very good shape. Also, this time we had a lot of underground work in different utility connections. We had to set up brand-new transformer in the back of the building. And that incorporates a lot of changes for us, building shutdowns and remaining power being run. But on top of that, when we looked at designing this building, a key point is really electrical connection. It feeds everything. And it works, it doesn't work without it, right? So we actually have some separate feeds that are going into our new building off the existing new transformer. And I say that in regards to, if you ever want to do some expansions to the structure later. We're running some provisional lines underground that'll support a gym if you choose to do so later. This is work we're paying for now, get it underground and get the things dubbed in. It'll pay dividends later, whatever decisions you have, we'll be doing flexible for you folks. So I just want to thank our contractors working on site because we ran into a few snags. Everybody's worked through it. We want to get the ground sealed up and, because in October, our large wall panels are coming. And they'll be set with cranes about probably about three, four days of that whole thing set. So all the work just has to get done. We're very happy the weather's been good to us and we're making good time. Hope for that stays. And right now, that's where we sit, but we're sitting in a very good seat. We're on schedule. And we're just happy that we've had the weather we've had.
You've taken the old electronics sign down and there's been no accidents or injuries, which is excellent.
Yeah. Safety is a problem.
They kicked me out. I didn't have a hard hat.
Oh, yeah?
When I was there.
Yeah. So and, and to, you know, just Steve and I have been working with Bendorf. We have our meeting tomorrow. We have a five-weekly meeting on Wednesday mornings. One of the next steps we're gonna be working on with them is gonna be working on the schedule from middle of August backwards to, you know, the date we're turning over the building to them and what all that looks like and how soon we can get in certain areas. So we just want to get that stuff ironed out, moving parts we've been working with. Some of the athletic, fall athletic teams about moving some of their stuff around at the end of the season. So we can get in and get their storage areas abated. Sooner we can get that done, the better off for all of us. So we'll be able to get that stuff organized around either Christmas break or Thanksgiving.
That's very good proactive. Thank you.
Yeah. So we're, we're gonna get those guys moved out. Well, we're actually gonna move them at the end of the season so the kids will be turning in equipment to the temporary storage place. And then we'll check it out of the temporary storage place. And then next fall, when they turn it back in, then they'll turn it back into their new permanent storage.
Good thinking. Thanks for all the work.
I have a question. Is there any unexpected costs foreseen at this point in time that you've run into?
Minor, basic plumbing issues that we ran into that were dealt with last, probably last week and a half. There was some existing site conditions that you really don't know until you open all the ground up, you know? So I never say never until the ground's backed down and everything's kind of in. So that did run a couple of snags for us, but we did make a change in one of the main plumbing lines. And I'm very satisfied with what we had to do because we surely don't want that to come back and haunt us later. Because we are paying for sins in the past that we're finding. We don't want to have those sins on us when we get done with this job. We want to be able to function. And one good thing I would say too is, and I'll just go back to the contractors. Looking at some of the job site work, you know, you never know what you're gonna find. They've been very diligent about bringing these things up to us. If I didn't know this, I wouldn't know it. And we ran, we actually ran cameras down some of the lines to make sure what, if it was what it's supposed to be. And some things just are never what they're supposed to be. So that's why I say, there may be a little incurred cost at this point, but it's peanuts in the scheme of things. Because we want a functional facility that's gonna be able to operate for a long period of time. And we're also making provisions for access if we have issues in some of these areas. Because that's a problem in old buildings. You don't know where to get into or how to get into it. And the code helps you with that, but that's not the answer always. A lot of times it's just experiencing your people on the jobs. Hey, we've done this, done this. We're gonna do it this way and this is why we're gonna do it. So down the road, we know we do. And the nice thing about, as this work progresses, all the changes that happen are documented. They are brought into digital form. The district will have that in hand when the job is done. So there'll be no guessing later about what you did and how you did it. Video documentation, also drawing documentation. And that always gets lost in a lot of projects. And we made that point clear. We don't want to have that on this job because we're spending twenty million dollars. We went over it. Most things have to be.
And within the, within the budget too, I mean, obviously the, the construction budget, there is a contingency, which is a percentage of the work performed. But we also have some allowances in there, like for instance, unsuitable soils. You know, if there's unsuitable soils, well, we're pretty much done knowing if there's going to be unsuitable soils or not. So that allowance will now be able to get pulled into contingency in case we run into something else further down the line. So we have a handful of those allowances that are built in and some of that stuff is gonna free itself up. Because like we said, the only really left earthwork to do of any substance now is just gonna be putting a new parking lot in over the existing parking lot. So I don't think we'll run into any unsuitable soil in that. You know, it's the footings where you worry about what you're gonna see once you open the earth up. So.
I didn't really make surprises, which are nice and truthful. We didn't have any wood. We didn't have anything buried like at the church.
There used to be a sawmill there.
Right. And I looked at the old documents to see what, where it was and we guessed maybe if we were gonna run into it. Because that happened when we did St. Paul's Church. We opened it up and their ground was unsuitable. We had to dig it all up. There was a hundred grand gone because what are you gonna do? You can't go on top of it. But we didn't have that on this site so far. I'm not gonna wood till the last piece of pavement is poured, but I think we sit in a very good seat. So thanks for your support.
Pretty soon, we're gonna open the walls up inside the building and then it's gonna be a whole other pray and hope. You know what you're opening up when you open up those walls, what you're gonna find behind them.
Yeah. And then one thing I'll throw on top of that, just as an FYI, when we merge buildings together and we have different types of storage conditions or elevation conditions, it does create snow load issues that you don't have currently, but now we do. So a portion of our, part of the billing, we open that up, we actually have to have custom-made joists put in the ceiling to support. Because it doesn't handle the snow loads. And years ago, the old loads were not calculated like they are today. So we will not take a risk on the facility connection and say, hey, we're getting, nah, we're close. No, we're not gonna be close. We're gonna be above on a board because we can't have that risk. So it's cost incurred, but it's great insurance and that falls onto our structural engineering. We've worked with them for many times, many, many jobs and they're very diligent about that. So things like that just come up, but we're gonna work through it and that's how it's gonna be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you both for the communication also.
You're welcome.
All right. Item D, discussion approval anonymous donation to wrestling room project.
Yeah, the wrestling, one of the things that we've done as part of this project is the wrestling program is going to get their first dedicated space, I believe, in, in the history of, of this district. Last month, you approved the, the naming of the site, but they're doing some fundraising so they can get some padding and, and, you know, just make the space their own. They've received three donations, other donations, but three sizable donations though that met the threshold to, to come forward to the board. That was donation, all three individuals wished to remain anonymous, but we still need to approve it. So there's, you can see a donation for fifty thousand, a donation for twenty-five thousand, and a donation for twenty thousand, one hundred, twenty-three dollars and thirty-six cents.
I will make that motion to approve.
We have a motion to accept the donations. Who's the second?
Jeff.
Thank you. Any discuss, we'll be, I know it's anonymous, but we still do something.
Yep, 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 yep. We make sure we get them all the information they need for tax purposes and we give them a thank you. And, and, and right now, they have the funds they need to do the project as they want to do it. So now they're, you know, so they're, they're sitting in a great spot.
It's awesome. Okay. All those in favor of accepting the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item E, discussion approval donation from Lenora Dulsky family.
Yeah, Paul was able to secure a donation from, from the family on, on a variety of different things for the metal shop. I'm not gonna get into any great depth of what all those things are. You can see them. There's a variety of things from nuts and bolts and screws, but some, some, you know, higher ranking things. The big thing from Paul's perspective, from a safety perspective is that the horizontal metal storage racks was a really big get to make that space much safer. So we're recommending approval of all the, and we greatly appreciate not only the donation of, of, above the anonymous, but these as well. So recommending approval of this, acceptance of this as well.
Motion by Kaiser?
Second.
Second by Bauer. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the letters and everything. Thank them. That's awesome.
And thank you to Mr. Barby for doing that.
Yes. We've had a lot of people put time, extra time in to get things. It's incredible. It's awesome.
Paul got there before I did. He saw all the good stuff.
Item seven, student board report. Ruby, welcome.
Oh, thank you.
Slawiki?
Yes.
Oh, you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
All right. So I am the Student Senate School Board Representative for this school year. I'm a senior and, can you say anything else or?
You're in the Student Senate. That's amazing.
Yeah. I'm in a bunch of other clubs. So many, I've had to write them down to remember them all. Maybe I'll bring it next time. I've got a long list for tonight, but our clubs and athletics have started off strong and there are lots of successes to highlight for the night. So from July, excuse me, fourth through the tenth, FCCLA members were in Orlando, Florida to compete at nationals for FCCLA star events. This is students taking action with recognition. They came home with three gold medals and one bronze medal. And one of the competitors placed first in the nation for her event and level. And that was for the second year in a row. At the high school's open house, the president of FCCLA, that's me, had the opportunity to speak to parents and educate them on our school's student resource closet, the motif, which is currently managed by members of FCCLA. Now that the school year started, we're busy recruiting members, planning the first meeting, which will hopefully take place at the beginning of October. We're excited for a year of giving back to the school and community as much as possible. The Mozeni NHS chapter has begun affiliating senior members for the school year. So the first meeting was on September third, where they discussed electing officers and deciding on two service activities to plan. They've already started logging service hours to meet the requirement of twenty-five hours total for the school year. On September eighth, our boys soccer team had a major win against Ryanlander, where they scored eight to zero. Since then, they've also been bonding off the field, playing mini golf, laser tag, and even enjoying a meal together donated by Gorski's. That was very nice of them. Mozeni DECA held its first meeting on September second with a great turnout. They're really excited to see students interested in DECA. In addition, the school store managers have been working hard to prepare the school, the store for students to enjoy. It was open for the first time this year on Wednesday, September tenth. They showcased new hoodies, tees, hats, and more. Students are able to stop in before school, ordering ELT, which is our extended learning time, to see all the great goodies. Some of our Skills USA members were able to attend FabTech 2025 Expo from September 8th through the 10th in Chicago, Illinois. They learned about ever-changing metals industry, and they were able to build interest in the future of metals. FFA held its first meeting on September 10th, and they're recruiting members to attend the World Dairy Expo in Madison, Wisconsin. This will take place on September 30th. The Math League had its first meeting on September 10th last week. They're starting to recruit members and prepare for upcoming competitions later this year. Your book has been meeting weekly to start working on this year's book, the most recent one being on September 12th. They're also planning an evening meeting on September 24th to learn about the new computer program that they'll be using, and they're starting to work on homecoming assignments. The Mozeni girls swim team is starting the season off strong with many new PRs for all of the girls. On September 12th, the high school team won both competitions at a dual meet. Our football team started off their conference season with a 21-14 victory at home on youth night against the Merrill Blue Jays on September 5th. They're also rocking the white on white for the first time in over 20 years. Model UN, which is Model United Nations, had its second meeting today during ELTE. They're currently preparing for their first competition on November 15th. Before then, they'll be discussing which countries they'll be modeling at the competition. Mozeni cross country is off to a hot start, having the most athletes signed up since 2021. They're practicing hard daily for weekly meets, and ultimately for their conference and sectional final meets. On September 2nd, they hosted an invite meet at Nine Mile County Park, followed by a senior night in the high school cafeteria, where they celebrated five seniors. Tonight, they're in Stratford at the Bear Invitational Meet. Our volleyball team is continuing its strong conference run against Northern Pines. Orsoby swept the matchup in three straight sets with scores of 25 to 16, 25 to 18, and 25 to 12. The JV squad battled hard with 25 to six, before falling short in the next two, with scores of 19 to 25 and 23 to 25. Tonight, they're fighting against their GNC rival Medford. The vocal motion board, the elected officers for the high school choir's, have become fundraising for their trip to New Orleans in March next year. They'll be competing with three groups of students, the concert choir as a whole, concert choir boys, and the concert choir girls. Finally, the Mozeni Student Senate is busy planning homecoming. The theme for this year is Disney, so each parade has chosen a Disney movie to use for their weekend hallway decorating, and they're flown to the end of the week. The senate is split up into committees to make sure everything is, is done as soon as possible. And that's all I have for tonight.
Ruby, that might have been one of the more. I taught for a long time, I didn't know some of that stuff. Thank you, and in the future, I know you've got a lot going on, if you have to leave or whatever, tell Mr. Dover's plate, because then we'll get you right away, so then you, because I know you have a lot going on. But thank you. Does he have any questions for?
That was awesome.
Thank you very much, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, awesome. Alright, item A, public forum. The public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included on the school board meeting agenda, general operating rules of the public forum determined by the president, once the number of people wishing to participate is identified. You sign up, you can ask for agenda items or non-agenda items. Anybody sign up?
No.
Okay? It's one of our big mind bit change, I'm going to be done, is to let anybody speak that wanted to speak. Thank you. Alright, item number nine, consent agenda. Any items that were pulled out, or do we have a, no issues? No issues though? Okay, I will seek a motion to accept the consent agendas.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion by Gorman?
I'll second.
Second by Zebra. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item 10, discussion and possible decision approval of monthly voucher list.
I'll make the motion to go through.
Got a motion by Nest?
I'll second.
Second by Zebra? Roll call vote.
Kaiser?
Here? Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Sankowski?
Yes.
Lewinsky?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Nest?
Yes.
Kayler?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 11, discussion, possible decision accepted of monthly treasurer's report?
I'll make the motion to go through.
Motion by Nest?
I'll second.
Second by Kaiser, and again, roll call vote.
Maple?
Yes.
Sankowski?
Yes.
Lewinsky?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Nest?
Yes.
Kayler?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 12, administrative reports.
Yeah, the only thing I want to touch on that's not on my report, uh, I want to thank the, the elementary staffers in the process of doing the Act 20, uh, screeners, uh, as part of the Act 20 Science of Reading Bill. And the one thing I just want to touch on with that, we talked a lot about budget, we talked about unfunded mandates, in order to do that, that test that's done one kid at a time, uh, we have to have 24 and a half substitute teacher days in order to make that happen. At 140, 150 bucks with taxes, you're looking at over $10,000 a year we're spending just to proctor the test that the state requires us to proctor, not to mention the time of the staff then, uh, on PD days to write the personal reading plan, so, and we do not get reimbursed for any of that. So you look at it as an unfunded mandate. I'm not here criticizing the science of reading, that's not at all what this is about. What this is about is the, the unintended consequences of that bill is, we're spending over $10,000 a year on substitute teacher costs to proctor an exam that they're asking us to get a screener.
Are we giving, I'm certain they're hearing this, are we giving that feedback to DPI and to state representatives?
Yeah, we're giving that feedback back to state reps. DPI has no control over that, it's, all that money comes out of JFC. Um, and there was a large conversation, because JFC held back on a lot of that funding originally, uh, and just, just got released, and it was in the last budget two years ago. Yeah, we are giving that feedback back to the state.
And when Greg and I attended the legislative meeting in Medford, we got a chance to talk one on one with the legislators, and we talked about that. That was a topic that, this is great, but this is more money we don't have.
And they're in the process of looking at creating one from Mass, now connect one version of Mass. So Ted could be comfortable on this. So I have.
Anybody, any other administrative reports we've heard from a lot of people?
Just one thing I just throw my, um, just because we've had a lot of great donations out at NCA field over here, so, uh, they've done a lot of work with the contractors setting the big poles, um, they ran the wires, the lights are operational out there, uh, they've got a few more poles of wire, but I just want to say thanks everybody for their time out there, um, because it's really come into life, so.
Greg and I talked about that eventually, we're going to acknowledge, and we have lights, scoreboard, storage sheds now, all privately donated. They're planning to make that their home, and there's even plans about trying to start working on the second field. And they, and Mozeni U football wants to make that their home, which, I mean, I, I was amazed with the poles and the lights, and, you know, we had a Wisconsin, two Wisconsin public service trucks and.
A lot of nice donations.
Unbelievable donations. And we plan on acknowledging that when it's done and, and doing some things. I, hopefully, we can announce it at a halftime football game, that type of thing. Anything else? Nope, nobody else, okay? Awesome, thank you. Item 13, other reports. Uh, item A, WOSB report?
Um, didn't have anything else at this time, except for the state conference, um, Greg had a note in here. Um, just the dates and let Jackie know if we're able to attend.
Yeah, the, the hotel block opens November 3rd, I believe is the date, but that thing is going to book in a hurry, so the sooner.
Last year did.
Yeah, the sooner you can let us know, if you can let us know by November 1st, if you plan on going, if you, or if you may be going even, that would be huge, so we can get those rooms blocked, uh, and booked for us, uh, and then if we, if you end up not being able to go, we can release it, but the sooner we can get that done, the better opportunity.
I, I know some of you have gone in the past, but I was totally impressed with the amount of, um, presentations and the variety and the things you could learn about. I was unbelievably impressed. You could spend hours and hours going there, just the vendors alone, just to see what's there. Very, very much encourage everybody to go. Okay, thank you. Item B, CISA 9?
Uh, CISA 9, so I did mention to you that, um, I am on the board at CISA 9, and, um, so I did have to go to the new board member orientation that evening.